To call the meeting to order at six P M and ask everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Leslie, roll call, please.
Mark De Pace.
Here.
Amanda Grubler.
Here.
Kirsten Gustafson. Diana Howard.
Here.
Matthew McRer.
Here.
Maureen Sheridan.
Here.
Michael Zabella.
Here.
And LaBona Proba.
Here.
That brings us to our student representative report.
The things that have been going on in the high school is that the class of twenty twenty eight is.
Oh, make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor.
I don't think the mic is on, yeah.
Hello, okay, now, I know, now, so, the class of twenty twenty eight is selling hot chocolate and pizza. The National Honor Society is sponsoring a food drive, and if you want to make a donation, you can be at the junior high main lobby or within the high school lobby. The class of twenty twenty seven is hosting a bake sale every Monday. There was recently a blood drive hosted by the Varsity Club on November seventeenth. They're also hosting a volleyball tournament on December sixth. The winter concert is December eighteenth. Model U N has a competition at Hudson Valley Community College, December sixth. Something new is that there's more hallway T V, TVs in the hallways, and there is important information on it, so however, sometimes they don't last as long, so if you're trying to read it, it just switches to another slide. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our junior high school report from Mr. Bear and Mrs. Patch.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. First and foremost, before we begin, I'd like to thank Ms. Patch, who has been a great addition to the junior high this year. We've been very fortunate to have her come on board. I'd like to also thank all the staff at the junior high, who, on a daily basis, show how they go above and beyond for every one of our students, so very appreciative of all of them. And I'd also like to thank all the board members here, because you guys support us on a daily basis, and without your support, we really couldn't do everything that we'd like to do. Thank you for giving us a few minutes of your time tonight to kind of just go over what our priorities and goals are for the year. The goals we've developed are purposeful and dual-focused in their intent. First and foremost, all the goals you're going to see tonight represent our roadmap for removing the junior high from our T S I designation, the targeted support and improvement, and returning our school back to good standing. All of our goals extend far beyond compliance and accountability measures. They're going to serve two purposes. At their core, they're designed with our students' futures in mind. Each priority we've established aims to equip each and every student at the junior high with the essential skills, knowledge, and work ethic necessary to become productive, engaged citizens in their communities and beyond. We believe that by focusing on both academic excellence and character development, we're not only improving test scores, but we're transforming lives and opening doors of opportunity for all of our young people. So with our goals tonight, we're going to provide you with a clear understanding of our vision, our action steps, and how we plan to measure our progress throughout the upcoming school year. I look forward to sharing all these goals with you. So, as you can see, this, this data that you'll see up above is data that's been shared with you all throughout the, the past year. The junior high is designated as a targeted school of improvement based on, you know, one or all of the following. At the junior high, we are a T S I designated school for academic performance of Black, Hispanic, multiracial, and economically disadvantaged students. I'd also like to make everyone aware, everything we do, we do it for all of our students in mind. Our goal is to support each and every one of our students.
Again, we believe, thanks for having us, you guys. We believe this is information you've seen already, because it's broken out across all three schools within our district, but we're looking at the red areas being the areas in which we're specifically targeted for improvement. And again, to echo what Mr. Bear said, we view this opportunity not just to help students who the state has identified as in need of extra support, but all of our students, because as many of you know, especially the former teachers, what you do for one group of kiddos can often have benefits for a larger group of students.
So, our, our three main priorities at the junior high are, number one, decrease chronic absenteeism by seventeen students or five percent. We really have the philosophy that the most important thing is getting our students into the building each and every day. If we don't accomplish that, everything else is a moot point. We're also looking to grow student proficiency in each subject on the sixth through eighth grade annual state assessments by five percent. And we're looking to improve upon school climate and culture as indicated by a five percent decrease in referrals for uncooperative behaviors. We will explain later on what, what those uncooperative behaviors are.
So, the question then is how? And a lot of these steps are things that we're already doing, but they're also, in addition, layers on that we're going to add this year. So, for a while now, the building has been hosting weekly attendance meetings with support staff, which includes our counselors or school psychologists, with our attendance monitor, who works with all three buildings, with Mr. Bear, and with other parties who can help with the restorative justice piece or the reaching out to families piece. So those are still meeting weekly, and we'll continue that through this school year. In addition, we attend the monthly attendance task force meetings that we're having at the district level that also involve the D A and other members of the community to help us really look systemically at how we can help kiddos get to school every day and stress the importance of that, because we are one aspect of their lives, and we want all of the parts of their lives to support getting to school every day. Continuing to work with Mr. Darren Collins, who's the district's attendance monitor, to visit families and reach out to community organizations to support students in coming to school. And as many of you know, this can look like having the district van go pick up a kiddo that missed the bus, or it can look like reaching out and having a phone call, how can I support your family in getting the kid to school? We're also, and this is a really fun, exciting thing that we did at M C Smith, what we're also doing at the junior high is incentivizing perfect attendance for every month. And I was blown away in September and October by the amount of students that participate in these awards ceremonies for perfect attendance. There've been pictures on our Facebook page, so if you're interested, you can go check it out. But it's really a wonderful thing, and the kids feel the success and special kudos that we're giving them for having that perfect attendance.
One of the next things we're also going to look at is not only incentivizing perfect attendance, but also students who have gained the most in attendance, because not everything needs to be perfect. So if we have a student who, one month, had forty or fifty percent attendance, and they increased its eighty percent attendance, we want to make sure we recognize them as well. Because again, you know, the, the main goal is to show growth. Not everything's going to be perfect, but if we have students who show growth, we want to celebrate their achievements as well. Priority number two, as stated, is growing student proficiency in each subject, E L A, math, and science by five percent. One way we're going to do that is use the N W A A screening tool to identify needed areas of growth. This is replacing FastBridge, as we used in years past. We believe, N W E A, the district believes, is a more efficient screening tool. We are going to offer high-quality Tier One instruction in math and E L A. It's something we already believe we do. You know, it's just, we're giving an opportunity to just, we're looking to increase it. Standards aligned, rigorous, engaging, and relevant Tier One instruction. We're also offering Tier Two and Tier Three instruction. We're looking to increase the number of students receiving all that. We've created a few additional classes at the junior high level in which students have the ability to receive Tier Two instruction, who were not receiving it already. We're also looking to create a positive culture around assessments and academic effort. If you remember, last year, I stood in front of you, and one of my main goals was to increase participation in the state tests last year. Happy to report, we achieved that considerably. Last year, I believe, we only had about sixteen students in the eighth grade who opted out of math, so, and the E L A. So it was, we had a great, great result out of that, so. Just positive culture all around will hopefully help lead to this goal.
And then our third priority for the year, again, something that you'll see that we've been doing, but just enhancing and synthesizing it more so that can really target kiddos that are in need of these supports. So we're looking to improve school climate and culture as indicated by a five percent decrease in referrals for uncooperative behaviors. And as you all know, making a goal, it's very important that it's measurable. And so we looked at uncooperative behaviors as being some of the specific identifiers in e-School, which is our behavior tracking system, that are the most disruptive to class, the most, the ones that create the least cooperation in a classroom, that really center around respect, trust, equity, justice, things like that. So, one of the words that's used, unfortunately, in our referral tracking system is insubordination, which really comes down to a place of disrespect of another student, of a teacher, of anyone in, in the learning environment. And so we're looking to decrease the referrals that really target that uncooperative behavior. We're still going to have late's, we're still going to have tardies. They're kids learning how to manage and budget their time. And they're also teenagers, and they're still learning how to navigate the world. So we're not looking to decrease all of our referrals, but really just target those ones that focus on respect in the culture. So, to do that, we are going to continue to grow the Ruler S E L program that the district has adopted and has been in M C Smith now for three years. Many of the staff in the junior high are very familiar with it, but we haven't really ruled it out to the students yet. So we're taking this year to ensure that all of the staff are familiar enough with the program, the language, the tools, the components, to be able to implement it in their classrooms, because as everyone knows, you can't teach something that you don't understand. So as part of that, we're working this year to have a goal that a hundred percent of our teachers have a mood meter displayed in their classroom, which is one of the chief components of the Ruler program to help students be able to name their emotions. Because in order to regulate your emotions, you have to first be able to identify them. So we're just looking at that basic step of Ruler, and then to build on that in years to come. We're also hoping to train more staff on restorative practices. We have several wonderful staff, Mr. Collins, the Mr. Walker's double, that know these restorative practices and can help us and the students navigate this every day. But we see that we could benefit from training additional staff in that work. And then also developing systems of communication between the people practicing the restorative conferences with students and the teachers or other students that were involved. So not only are the core people who were involved in the disruptive experience having the restoration, but the class as a whole, or the group as a whole, that experienced it, so that it's really all-encompassing and branches out to a multitude of students. At this point, we'd love to take questions and open it up to discussion, thoughts that you might have, or items of clarification needed.
LaBona.
So, I think it was on slide three. Can you explain, like, how is the, like, one or two, how is it being scored? Like, is that like a total number? Can you explain a bit more?
In regards to the weighted average?
Yes.
There, there's a formula that the state ed uses. And so they basically just make us aware of what, where we fall in regards to each category.
Okay, I have another question. Can you please explain what Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three is on slide seven, oh, six, sorry?
Sure, so, it's, you know, in education, jargon's always changing, right? The words, it's always existed that you're looking at groups of students in collective halls. So Tier One refers to the greatest population of students that are served by the general curriculum. It's usually around eighty, eighty-five percent. And that is the group of students to whom you are delivering the core curricular instruction. Tier Two is then looking at ten to fifteen percent of the students, which are students who are in need of repeated instruction or alternate seating, not necessarily in I E P, but just kids that benefit from more differentiation in the classroom instructional methods. So, both Tier One and Tier Two are often provided within the classroom, and classroom teachers are trained to be able to provide both of those levels of instruction. Tier Three is looking at the other five percent of kiddos that maybe don't glean the information that we're trying to provide to them upon the first instructional mode, within the first instructional mode. So they would be students that could benefit from an A I S class or a smaller group environment, or students that might then end up having an I E P or a special education classification, because they need additional repeated instruction, or it's, it broke down in a different way, or more hands-on materials. So it's really just talking about how we want to solidify that instruction at the Tier One level, and then also continue to increase the amount of students who are supported at Tier Two and Tier Three. One thing I wanted to add on is, we talked about Tier One instruction using the Questar Math Specialist as a resource for that, because she can really help coach our teachers in providing a broader array of Tier One instruction. Does that help answer your question?
Yes, thank you, I have, oh, wait, I have two more questions, I'm sorry.
Never apologize for asking questions, it's a really good skill.
What is the Ruler S E I?
So, it's actually Ruler S E L, which is social emotional learning. And that's basically, it's, it's a program that, it's basically a curriculum, correct, Ms. Patch? So, it was ran at M C Smith, who used it, and we are implementing it now. We're beginning to implement it with our sixth graders, and then we're going to start rolling it out throughout the seventh and eighth grade as well.
So I can clarify a little, so S E L is another, you know, with education, we love acronyms, so social emotional learning. But Ruler itself is an acronym that stands to be able to recognize your emotion, understand your emotion, label your emotion, regulate your emotion, and then, oh, sorry, I did it backwards, express your emotion, and then regulate your emotion. So, it's working with kids, because as science has proven, we can't do anything cognitive unless our basic human needs are met. And so it's making sure kids have the ability to meet their basic human needs, express their basic human needs, and regulate their basic human needs, so that they can more aptly benefit from the instruction being provided.
Thank you, no more questions.
Ms. Sheridan.
I have a, I'll, I'll start with Ruler, since one, one of my questions has to do with Ruler. Ms. Patch, can you tell us a little bit about how effective and what you noticed at the elementary school, and how you think it would best be implemented here at the junior high? You know, you've only had a few months, but so far.
Sure.
At M C Smith, you know, I didn't prepare data from there based upon Ruler, but anecdotally, I would say that I saw students being able to express their feelings and recognize that they were, their feelings alone, and that didn't necessarily change how someone else was feeling or thinking. So what I would see were students on the playground saying, I was really mad when you took the ball. And then the other student saying, yeah, but I'm really sad, because I want to turn. And so just them being able to identify their feelings provided them with the groundwork to then have a conversation about equity and turn-taking and et cetera. It's going to look a little bit different at the junior high, especially for these first couple of years, because our current sixth graders are somewhat familiar with it in that they used it at M C Smith in fourth and fifth grade. But our seventh and eighth graders really weren't at M C Smith for any of the groundwork of the program, and so it's starting from scratch in some ways with them. And we've had discussions about how we don't have a morning meeting, because we run in blocks of forty-minute periods, that how are we going to do a mood meter check-in every period? And that would eat too much into instructional time. And so we've had conversations about where does that fit in the day? Maybe it's when they come back after recess? Because just like at M C Smith, that's when emotions and feelings are often the highest. They've had, even older kids have had some free time, some unstructured time, and so they might need some processing time before they jump into curriculum again. So we're looking at ways to use it at the junior high level. The other beautiful thing about kids at this developmental level is that they can create some of the ideas themselves. And so we're hoping to involve student voice in what Ruler looks like at the junior high. I would say overall, anecdotally, again, I saw referrals go down, because when you can regulate your emotions and express your emotions, you're much more likely to solve a conflict with words than with actions.
Thanks, I have a couple of questions on, on other topics. One, one of them is about, how are you doing with the placement of students? Or do you have any data on the placement of students, the number of students in Tier Two and Tier Three currently receiving services?
Well, I, we, we do have data, I did not bring that data with us. So we just finished the N W E A benchmark for the beginning of the year. We're actually still in the process of finishing up some students, but we've really begun to implement and use that data. So, any student who tested out needing Tier Three instruction, we have placed them in A I S classes. Many of our seventh grade students who need Tier Two instruction in math or E L A are receiving an additional class. And before we received this N W E A data, we went off the end of the year benchmarks for FastBridge from last year.
Can you send that data to us, so that we can have a follow-up?
I can get it for, absolutely, yeah.
That was one of my questions, too.
Yeah, absolutely, I'll compile it for you.
So they're getting an extra math in, like, an A I S class, is that what you're talking about?
Some, some of our seventh grade students are, yes.
Yeah. How many sessions of that do you have? How many groups of Tier Two?
I believe it's two, math is, math is two, and E L A, I believe there are both two.
Two groups of Tier Two in math, and two groups of Tier Two in E L A.
Yeah, I would have to go back and double-check.
And you're looking at, to see, you're going to look at the data to let us know what's shifted since the test.
Well, I'm going to get you the data of who's, who's taking, who has Tier Two and Tier Three instruction based off the N W E A data.
Currently?
Yes.
Because we didn't, excuse me, because we didn't have the N W A data to make the groupings for this academic year, I think what we're both looking forward to is the January data from N W A, because that's going to show us more of the growth. This was a benchmark, it's using a different assessment tool, so it's hard to measure, compare FastBridge with N W A, we can.
Would you give us that in January, too?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we're looking forward to seeing what that looks like, because I think that's where we'll see more of the movement.
And you're no longer doing FastBridge?
N W E A replaced FastBridge.
Okay, is that, Dr. Bailey, didn't we talk about?
I'm sorry?
I was, never mind, I'll, I'll ask Dr. Bailey. I, I was under the, I was under the impression that we were going to keep FastBridge.
FastBridge is used, being used as a progress monitoring tool.
Which it always was, yeah.
Yeah, and we're also using it for a social emotional piece for the Sabres.
So you still, you still have FastBridge, yeah?
We, we do, yes, but. So all of our beginning, middle, and end-of-year assessments are N W E A.
Um, I wanted to, I have two more things, I'm sorry, to take.
No, never.
The attendance, I, at our last, the time before board meeting, Laura Bender mentioned, we had asked the high school, we were talking about attendance, and, you know, it's an issue across the board for, for all buildings, and she had suggested, it was a great suggestion, that we, we need to focus on attendance in classrooms as well. It's not enough to just get kids into school, they need to be in the classrooms and on time. So that's just, I'm just putting that out there, reiterating, you know, what, what she said, because, I mean, that could be a part of the perfect attendance, you know, it should be. Tardiness and attending classes.
Absolutely, we've discussed that in our attendance meeting, how we're going to start, you know, spending a certain amount of time in that meeting discussing tardies, whether it's, you know, getting to class within five minutes, or, but it definitely, right, we need kids in class and being productive, not just in the building, absolutely. and being productive, not just in the building, absolutely.
And then, um, I, I asked Derek the same question, it, um, but from, from your, um, task for, force, um, for the attendance and your attendance meetings, what do you, what information are you gleaning from that, getting from the, the community, um, partners? And how's that being implemented?
So far, a lot of it has been what barriers are preventing our students from getting to school? How, how can we break down those barriers? What assistance can we offer? How can we, uh, partner within, you know, with the community? And what resources are available to us? Um, obviously, you know, we, we know a lot of what are our barriers are, but it's really, a lot of it is just coming together as one, you know, with the whole approach, trying to figure out how can we, each and every one of us contribute to support, you know, getting a student to school each and every day.
Some element of that task force as well has been looking at resources from other school districts across the country, because as we know, post-COVID, uh, the numbers of attendance have become a significant issue for many school districts. So it's been nice to have, um, like a hive mind, almost, of people who have heard of initiatives that have worked in different schools, or, "I went to a PD with a school that had a, a walking bus," and so we've discussed options and things like that. Um, so it's not, it's a chance for everyone to get together and brainstorm, and then look at what we can implement and how we can measure that.
Can, I just have one. And then-
I think that you would have some other ones.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, boy.
Um, so the last one is about, um, restorative, just, restorative practices, right? Um, and I'm just wondering how, um, so you mentioned Malachi, and you mentioned, um, Darren. How does, how were you able to transfer, get that into the classroom? Because my experience has been that it's a separate entity, um, and it wasn't yet being used. It was talked about being used for, um, kids returning from, um, long-term suspension, or any suspension, right, to, to, to give them that-
So absolutely, so, uh, Mr. Walker, he's been phenomenal. Um, and he's providing, it's, you know, almost like a three-tiered approach. One, we are, he's obviously taking care of a lot of mediation, so dealing with conflicts as they arise. But we really are, like you said, trying to get him into the classroom and looking at the proactive,
Right, preventative.
Preventative, proactive approach. So, um, Ms. Patch has been implemental in helping get him in a few of our classrooms, and she can really speak to it.
So one, uh, classroom in need, we identified at the very beginning of the year, had a lot of kids who were struggling with transitioning from home into their morning program and getting right down to academics. So at the beginning of the year, we asked Mr. Walker to spend several mornings in there, doing a circle with the students to help them transition between home or outside and the academic piece of their program. So we started off with him five days a week, and then he went down to three days a week, and now he's doing it at this point in the year, one day a week. And we've already seen referrals in that class go down, difficulties interpersonally that the students are having minimized, because they have a place to put those conversations. And, um, for anyone who doesn't know, a lot of the work restoratively is on just relationship building, and when you're a community of learners that care about each other and know each other, you're much less likely to trigger each other. And so it, he is doing those, what I would say again, like tier three, uh, mediations with students coming back from, um, from time away from school to help them re-enter, but he's also doing that tier one approach where he's going into classrooms and leading a circle. He's also been into some of our sixth grade rooms in the same capacity. Um, and also the other, you know, tier one piece he does, too, is he's out in the hallways all of the time when he's not scheduled with a meeting, especially building relationships with our sixth graders who he is new to.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is it my turn?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Um, so some of my questions were answered, but I also wrote some questions before we got the presentation, because this, this, this agenda was, was kind of last minute in a lot of different ways, so I hope you don't mind entertaining some oddball questions.
Not at all.
Uh, but there were cuts at the junior high school, and I'll specifically ask about the sixth grade. Uh, what did we do to make sure that the sixth grade students had cohesive, equal social studies classes since each individual teacher had to compensate for the one social studies that was left? Like, how did you manage a, an individual curriculum for three, was it three different teachers? I don't, I don't remember how many teachers were left.
So every, every teacher is teaching a section of social studies. So all four, um-
But do they have common planning time? I didn't see anything about materials, we weren't asked for materials.
So currently, they don't have common planning time, other than their prep, which they have every day, same period. But we have been using times in PLCs, actually. We used our PLC time today to talk a little bit about what that looks like, because we've been talking about how, um, different classes are grading differently, and how that can inform our instruction, and a conversation we had was, this year, which is an anomaly, we're hoping, that, um, that when we have student, uh, teachers from different discipline levels, how are they making sure that that program is the same? So they are having conversations in PLCs with us.
We've also provided them with, and I think Ms. Rubinowitz, was it Social Studies Weekly? I think we got them the-
Was that like a Scholastic magazine?
Yeah, Studies Weekly, we, we got them the license for that.
Years and a half, years.
Um, and as well as the Social Studies Department Chair at the high school offered her assistance, when, whenever needed, she would come down and, and meet with all of them and help support and, um, you know, offer any guidance.
Um, so speaking of PLCs, that was another one of my questions. As a result of the data collected in last year's PLCs, what changes were implemented this year? And how do you evaluate your own changes from last year's PLCs?
Um, well, obviously, based off of, you know, we had, we had a lot of, a lot of changes from, from last year. Um, so in regards to whatever we collected, um, you know, I don't know how to-
Spit it, it's okay, we'll get it, we'll get it, we don't have to be eloquent here. This is, this is a school, we say things how they are, right?
Well, we basically just, whatever data we took, we, we created the master schedule with everything, with all the data in mind. Um, we basically just created the, doing it the best way to support all the students and the staff. I don't what, what, I don't know what data you're, you're discussing.
Well, it's your data, you collected the data, right?
I know, I don't have, we had, we had eight months' worth of PLCs last year, so I don't know exactly what.
What, did you make any changes, and what were they based on, that's all? Your schedule.
I can speak to just one minor change, but I think sometimes those minor changes have a big impact. So, again, I wasn't at the junior high last year, but I did help with PLCs at MC Smith.
Yep.
And we were using the DataWise, um, template, which is a Harvard-based program to look at, um, a spiral of action. And our note-taking document was based on that and provided to us by the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning at the time. And a lot of the feedback from teachers, at least at MC Smith, was that it was a little bit verbose and a little bit cumbersome to capture the note-taking and conversations from each PLC. So I readapted it this summer and streamlined it, and that's the one we're using at the junior high as well, so that it has more functionality. We're still taking teacher feedback, um, today, we had a sixth grade teacher say, "I'm not really sure where to type this note." And so we're still adjusting the note-taking, so that our data and our documentation is a more seamless process.
Okay, uh, so as you know, there's a new promotion and retention policy this year. Uh, since, since there was a benchmark in September and one in October, and then we finished the first quarter, we're, um, this is the time to reach out to families to make meetings. Have you done that, and how many have been responsive to that?
We, we have started to, um, we are also going off of the MTSS process that's defined by the Branching Minds playbook. So I have already, um, reached out to all staff. The first step in the process is coming up with a school-level, uh, team, and all the teachers who have, all the staff, I should say, uh, who are interested have responded to me. We are gonna conduct our first meeting in the first week of December. And then, they, we will meet one to three times a year, then we will implement the grade-level MTSS teams who will then begin, uh, meeting. But our school counselors have also been meeting with families of students who, uh, may be struggling academically, or who have, uh, need, who have areas of opportunity. So we have been in contact with many families.
I think I have, uh, just, I'll skip that one, I'll do that one another time. So, um, let's see, the only other question I think that I'll ask for today, uh, is that, do you have a timeline date for teacher evaluation? So we know when all that's gonna come to, like, a, a general idea of when you think that's gonna be done?
Well, obviously, they'll be completed by June first, um, but we have, the email went out to all teachers this week, uh, asking them to begin scheduling. So Ms., they've been divvied up between Ms. Patch and myself.
Awesome.
The email went out, I believe, was it yesterday? Um, so it went out, and we have three teachers set it up yesterday. Um, so we will be, I'm giving, the email stated we'll give everyone until about February to set it up, and then if not, we'll-
To schedule their own, and then at that point, they'll schedule.
So.
Might I get a question?
Yeah, I have a question. Okay, I was watching your presentation here. Um, I see all the solutions to improve. Have you ever gone back and looked to see what the root cause of all the issues were? Was it classes, was it teachers, was it, what was it that got us into the situation that we're in now, where we're being watched by the state so closely and ranked so poorly?
I, I mean, we have tried to, to go take a look back. Obviously, it's been a little bit difficult, because a lot of this information is going, is, goes to central administration. So with a lot of the turnover, we haven't been privy to a lot of the data. Um, this is Ms. Patch's first year at, uh, junior high. This is my first full year at the junior high as the, as the principal. Um, so that is, obviously, right, we will, always want to get to the underlying root cause, and figure out how to, how to fix the issue there. Um, but that will be part of the work that we continue, to find the root cause. Um, obviously, as we get deeper into the school year, we'll begin to gather more data to really, to hopefully help us come up with solutions on how to prevent these issues.
Yeah, except the solutions are great, it's just, why did we get there?
Absolutely, yeah, why, why are we here?
Saying, but was, did things change after COVID? Is that when we saw the decline?
Again, for me, it, it's hard, I, I think, overall, in every school district, I would say yes, that's the answer. Um, for, you know, I've only been in this position since July first, I was interim last year, so I don't have that much-
But you were the AP, too, though.
For four months, so I don't have, but I'm saying, I don't have, I'm not privy to that, that deeper the data that-
I also would like to speak a little bit about the idea of a growth mindset, because I've been part of several educational communities, and especially when you're new, as we are in various definitions of the word. Um, and you come in and you start to look at what went wrong, what did you do? You're met with a lot of defensiveness, and then the progress has kind of shut down. So I think you're a hundred percent right, there's got to be root causes, whether it's COVID, whether it's cell phones, whether it's increased mental health issues, pop, you know, we could point all these fingers at it, but I think what we're really trying to focus on is how to grow and grow across the board, so that it's no longer a way in which we're identified.
Well, I, I mean, I think also the, these classifications are new, but for our district as a whole, it's not new. We were a targeted district in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve.
Yes.
You know, we ticked back up, so that we weren't targeted anymore, and then COVID happened, and now, yeah.
Yeah, it's yo-yo.
Yeah, so these are, are systemic issues.
The other, and the other thing is that the, the state changed the testing, and that, and then they went from paper to computers, those are all factors, too. So there, there's a ton of stuff that goes into-
In addition to that, we've talked a lot about that, that identifier of Hispanic, which we realized through our work last year at the, uh, elementary school in looking at the SKEP plan, is that that's largely self-reported by families, too. And so then, how much of that data is very accurate? So that's why we've tried to take more of an approach of, what can we do to help every kid do better? Because, as all of us know, data can be really valuable, but you can get lost in a bog of it, and you really need to just focus on what are some key achievable items? And so we worked really closely with Dr. Bailey on achievable goals, things that we can grow this year, um, and then look to grow upon that year after year.
Should I, Amanda?
I just have one quick thing, and I promise I'll be fast.
No, no, no.
I, one, first, I really appreciate that this is really, like, quantifiable, that it feels achievable, to your previous point, and that I think you're tackling, like, we need kids in seats, we're looking at what their core academic programming is, and we're looking at the, like, community building that creates a space. And so I, I really appreciate that. Um, I don't expect you to answer this right now, but it would be great to see, um, just reports, this is similar to a question I asked in the high school one, too, like, of, like, what the attendance is in year over year, like, is October better this year than it was last year? If it's not, then what are we tweaking? Um, just to make sure that we are, like, moving in the right direction on that. Oh, and if you have an answer now, great, but I don't expect you to pull it off your-
I don't have an answer now, but what I can do is tomorrow, I can send you the month-by-month attendance, because that was, that was my big initiative last year.
Amazing.
Like, I felt like coming in last year, especially, you know, coming in in October, there was a few things I could control, like, immediately, and I felt like attendance was one of them. I'm happy, you know, we, the attendance, I, we increased it by about eight percent last year, and I tracked it monthly, so I can, I can send that out to everyone tomorrow on what our monthly attendance rates were.
And I don't have it in front of me now, but I believe for September and October, we were above ninety percent across the world.
Amazing.
Every day.
That's awesome.
Every day, so.
Yeah, it's huge. Thank you. That's it, that was my-
Thanks.
Uh, yeah, I'm just wondering, uh, can you, can you quantify the, the referral space here? Um, five percent decrease, like, how many is that, is that? I, I'm having trouble visualizing, is how, how, what impact that is to the students to, to get that down five percent?
Absolutely, well, and what I can do is I can include in my, in the data I send over tomorrow, I can show you the, the, I can just do it monthly, the month of referrals for, for the three, um, disruptive behaviors in subordination and disrespect. So I can provide how many referrals, if you'd like, I can do it for the month of October, and just show you, you know, what five, decreasing by five percent would contribute to.
Okay.
Kenny, do you think, could you, if you have the data on, on the number of students in the different, um, that are receiving AIS math and AIS, the tiered, the different tiers?
Yep.
That would be awesome.
Yeah, I'll put that all together in a, a little spreadsheet for everyone.
No more than three things, because we can't remember more than three.
Well, you can remember three, and you're gonna know something.
It's all on video.
Yeah.
True.
Um, uh, last thing, y- y- you called it out, but create a positive culture around assessments and academic effort. I'm around a lot of junior high schoolers, and you, you hear them say, like, you know, "These state tests don't matter, they don't affect my grades," and it just seems like a really tough battle to get them, just take them seriously, and I don't know how to do that, or how to change that message. But I've heard them even say, like, "I just go in, I just fill in, like, the same bubble, like, all the way down the sheet." Um-
And, and that's kind of what I was, you know, when I discussed about participation. Last year, we, we hit our goal of maximizing participation, but now, how do we not only maximize participation, but how to maximize effort? And that's something that's discussed on a daily basis, whether it's in PLCs, attendance meetings, staff meetings. Um, I, I think that's, you know, that's the age-old question, and it's something we're really still trying to come up with. Um, you know, it, you really, you can't, obviously incentivize performance, right? So it's really, a lot of it is creating that culture, getting, wanting, getting students to have that intrinsic motivation, wanting to do it for themselves, want to become better people, better, more successful. Um, I think it starts with just the staff who we have in the building, and the staff's phenomenal, right? They're showing our students how to be productive citizens, how to want it from within. Um, it can also be relying on community members, members outside in, in Hudson, who have, you know, who have risen to be really successful, productive individuals. Um, so, so there's, there's a lot of things we can do, but it is a work in progress, unfortunately.
I think it's a balance as we incent, uh, not incentivize performance, which was, uh, which is not what we're trying to do, but, um, as we encourage effort. Um, I think it is a balance with the kids who, who say that, "But the score doesn't matter, and it doesn't impact my grades." Um, and we see the alternate trend in, uh, in a different set of kids, um, which is test anxiety, um, and extreme stress. So I think, you know, finding a balance there and me, finding a middle ground, um, is the real tricky spot.
And we talk a lot about that, and I think Mr. Bear is exactly right, that it's culture. And having taught sixth grade, a lot of the conversations I would have with the students would be to de-stigmatize and, like, remove the fear base from that testing situation. So I used to equate it to them, like, "It's a measurement tool. We want to know what your brain, how your brain works right now as a sixth grader, and then we're gonna measure it again next year, and we're gonna say, 'Oh, my gosh, your brain really grew,'" or, "No, your brain didn't grow in this way." And so what can you do to step up and take it, so that it's not so much attached to value as it is to a, a measurement tool to help kids know their areas of strengths and their areas of challenge?
Is it, is it fair to say that it's not testing the students, but it's testing the school?
What do you mean by, the state test?
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, we're, it's, it's for the state to talk about-
Oh, the designation you're talking about?
Yeah, and, and so, you know, if, if, I don't know if it's less stressful to a student in their mind, that it doesn't necessarily weigh on them, but it weighs on the collective or something.
Oh, I, I think that's fair to say, yeah, I mean, I don't think many of our students would even realize that, you know, well, and nor should we, we want them to, right? Like, we want them to be students and just strive to be the best, best individual that they can be, whether it's in the classroom and outside of the- whether it's in the classroom and outside of the classroom. So it's just the same thing with the state tests, right? Like, we just, we want our students to perform to the best of their ability, whether that-
I think the more that kids feel confident, like you said, with like, high-quality tier-one instruction too, the more they walk into a test and they're like, oh, I know how to read this. Oh, I know how to do this math problem, like, mm, that leads to better, like, when they feel confident in their academics all year long, inherently your scores improve, right? And so I think that it's, it's less, I mean, I don't know, my personal opinion is it's less about test strategy and more just about like, academic comfort and confidence all year long, which is like, I, and again, like, I appreciate that about this plan, this isn't a test prep plan, this is a like, how do we improve the whole learning community all year, which then inherently leads to that?
Yes, Ms. Howard.
On that note, and I was gonna ask, ask about academic tutoring later, because I know it's not just junior high school, but there are some children, students, that are maybe not the most successful and maybe not the least successful, but are in the middle, that might want some help and might not be, uh, in athletic teams. So my first question for everybody was, I haven't heard anything about athletic tutoring, are we still doing that? And can we provide a tutoring program for the kids that perhaps want to attend to get that extra help? So they're ready and prepared for a test or to pass a class or even the state tests? And that was on my list, and it wasn't for you?
I can't, I can't speak to athletic tutoring aspects.
But do we have the athletic tutoring?
I, I, not that I'm aware of this year, that we haven't had it.
And what happened with that?
Maybe we can like, table that and bring it up once we-
I, I, we're gonna find out, though.
Yeah, and maybe we can have like, a general tutoring for other kids that might want to get help in a certain topic for, uh, you know, to pass a test or their class.
I, I do know a lot of the junior high school teachers, uh, let students come to their classrooms during lunch and, um, either retake tests or go there for help, so.
I mean, like, test prep or regents or whatever else they need?
Yeah, no, I mean, more help is always better. Well, thank you, really appreciate you guys having such an engaging conversation and answering tough questions and, uh, everything that you do.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
While it's fresh in my mind, and I hate to go low-tech. Miss Patch and Mr. Bear are a hundred percent on the right track to try and affect the change in the things that you've discussed. I just wanna quickly demonstrate the magnitude of our effort that needs to happen. So Laban asked a great question, what's tier one, two, and three? And they mentioned eighty-five percent of students should be within that tier one. What that really means is eighty-five percent of our students should be proficient by just going to class. Right now, thirty percent are. So, the pyramid, and I'll get out of the way in a second, is supposed to look like this. Eighty-five percent in the bottom, they get it, they're going to class and they're getting it. And then you have a few that need tier two, which is additional in classroom or out of classroom. And a little teeny bit, and I grew a big, grew a big tier three here, should be that, uh, intensive, uh, academic intervention service. Unfortunately, this is us. This enormous area needs that. What we're constantly trying to do is we're trying to move this line up, we're trying to get as many kids proficient as possible. This is the crisis that we're facing, and I accept, kids are all different from COVID, they're very different students, but they are in every school in New York State. The test changed, they're, now they're electronic, it's more complicated, but they're different, and they're electronic for every student in New York State. And when it shows that we're a one, that means that we're in the bottom ten percent of all schools in New York State. And I keep saying, we just don't want to be in the bottom ten percent. We need to be eleven, twelve, thirty, fifty, that's what we're aiming for. We need to move this line up this way, and you know which kids, we're, we're saying like, reduce, uh, chronic absenteeism? You know where you make the most gains? These kids right here. These kids that almost get it. These kids that are almost not chronically absent, these kids that are almost not in trouble all the time. You move these kids first, and you build momentum, and then this line moves up here. And then you'll have a whole new group of kids that need to be moved up just a little bit higher, and you just keep doing that. So when they say five percent, that's what they're talking about. They want to move this line up, so we have eighty-five, we get closer to eighty-five percent of kids who are proficient just by coming to school and doing what they're supposed to. And then granted, there are a lot of other things that happen in our district, we're over sixty-six percent poverty rate, and poverty rate is directly linked to academic outcomes. The culturally, we've had a vastly changing culture, uh, within our community, that has an impact on these things as well. But we have amazing resources, we have amazing staff who are perfectly capable. We just all have to agree that this is what we're trying to do. And agree on the few things that we're gonna do to do it, not a hundred things, a few things that will move that, that five percent. Three, he carries it, three, that's good. But I really appreciate their thoughtfulness, and they have teams of people that are being just as thoughtful. And what you should continue to hear is continuity between what the elementary is trying to do, the junior high, uh, and the senior high. We're, I know, I know we're going backwards, we're gonna present the elementary last, but this is the same story that Mr. Brenneman is gonna tell. We're trying to move this little piece up a little higher each time. And, um, to your questions about data, what we want to do, so we just, just did the benchmark. Um, all of these things that are up here, we're gonna share the data with the board three times a year, and the first one's coming up. Because we're already starting to measure, you need to know where we're starting from. We'll do another one in, uh, January, February, we'll do another one as we approach the end of the year. And, um, I'll talk more about how we're gonna share that when I talk in my, um, what am I, superintendent's component, but thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Um, I just want to pu, use the word crisis, which I don't think anybody's ever used here in a very long time.
You're welcome.
Uh, yeah. And, yeah, I, I don't want to, uh, and I think that that is okay, and I think we need to be comfortable with that. And I hope the rest of the board agrees that like, we want, we want the truth, and we want to be talking about the reality of what we need to do, um, for our students and for the district, so.
The statistics on the difference between graduating from high school and not are daunting, that's why it's a crisis. And it isn't just about graduation, all the things we do leading up to it are essential too. But again, indicators, right? If we're not producing graduates, then we're depriving them of millions of dollars in productivity over their lifetime, we're depriving them of choices. It's a crisis for those children, those families, every day, and we embrace that together.
Thank you. Um, all right, next we have, uh, superintendent search presentation from Dr. Kueda Adams.
I have a question, um, did you guys decide on HYA, or is this just like an introduction, and there's several other firms you guys?
Yes, we're, uh, Dr. Kueda Adams is gonna be leading our search. Um, I can talk a little, a little bit more about the process in our, uh, in the board president's report, which will come next. But yeah, Dr. Adams will talk about, uh, her firm and her background and her experiences in, in Hudson, and, um, take it from there.
All right, thank you.
Well, I'll go ahead and start it, good evening, and thank you.
Good evening, and thank you so very much for having me, President DePass, and also, um, Depace, I'm so sorry. And members of the board, uh, and super, interim superintendent, Dr. Bailey. Um, it is so nice to be here with you this evening. Um, I know that we've had an opportunity to meet virtually, but I'm so happy to be here in person, and it's so good to see all of you. I am a thirty-seven-year educator, I am twice retired from two districts, and I love education. And that's why, uh, as my husband says, who's here with me tonight, Mr. Eric Adams Senior, that's something that I really am not doing well at retirement, uh, because I keep working. And I keep working in education for our children. Is, I am one of the lead associates for HYA and Associates, where we do superintendent searches across the country. We work with many districts, large and small, to help them find the best superintendent that fits their needs. And this is quite a joy for me, because having been a superintendent, also an associate superintendent, classroom teacher, building level principal, is extremely important, and having worked with boards of education, I truly understand that as a board, this is the most important decision that you make in selecting the leader of our school district. And so as you are aware, um, I want to talk to you just a little bit about HYA, and then we're gonna get into our process. We are, we are all over the country, uh, we have over a hundred and thirty associates that work, and we work in teams, or we work depending on the size of the district, we may work individually, or we may bring in other associates as needed. Uh, one of the things that I would like to emphasize here is that I am not currently working on another superintendent search. And so my attention would be completely dedicated to the Hudson City School District with regard to searching for that superintendent. Also, uh, we are one of the largest superintendent search firms or search companies in the country. Uh, we have a ninety-four percent rate where our superintendents go through their first contract. Uh, we do have a guarantee with regard to that, and we can talk about that a little bit later, if you would like. But we also make sure that we provide the support for our boards. And we want to, you to think of us as ambassadors and as partners in this work. And the thing that we really, uh, emphasize is, and I'm gonna jump right to this, because this is the key of what we're gonna talk about tonight. This is our signature process for looking for a superintendent, and it explains the process that we go through. And it's four stages, we have the engage stage, the recruit stage, the select stage, and the transition. And so I'm gonna un, unpack these a little bit, and if you have questions, I'm more than happy to take those questions. But in the engage phase, this is where we start by conducting a planning meeting. So I would work with you as a board holistically, I would also meet with each of you individually to see what your priorities are, to see what are those things that you are looking for, to see what some of the challenges have been in the past, as well as where you're looking to go in the future. You've just heard a wonderful presentation from the junior high school, and you've looked at those priorities that are at that level. And so finding a superintendent who understands, um, achievement as well as attendance, looking at chronic absences, absentees, how would that superintendent be able to contribute to strategies for reducing chronic absenteeism? You'd want to have someone who has, uh, who has experience with that. Also, when you talk about your social and emotional learning, someone who may be familiar with Ruler, someone who's familiar with different strategies for helping students understand how to regulate their emotions, to label those emotions, and to understand how to communicate that in ways that are beneficial. And ultimately, you would want to have a superintendent who understands the delivery of quality instruction. Because at the core of it, when you're talking, as Dr. Bailey mentioned, this group of students that you're trying to move up and increase that eighty-five percent, that is about the quality, the delivery of quality instruction. And so you'd need to have a superintendent who understands what some of those strategies are, so that they would be able to work with building leaders and with the board, as well as with the community, to understand, here's how we get from point A to point B. And so those needs are going to be unique. One of the things that we do is we will conduct interviews, we'll do focus groups, we'll meet with your communities. And these groups of focus groups, you would determine those with me, you would say, these are the groups of individuals or groups of, you know, categories that we would like to meet with, maybe it's a support staff focus group, maybe it's a teacher's, uh, focus group, maybe it's a community group, maybe it's your administrators that you would like to have, you could have separate meetings, or you can group them together. While we know that we're not going to be able to speak to every single person in the district, we couple those focus groups with a survey that goes out to your community. You will have input with that survey, what are the questions that you're asking, what's important to you to know from your community? Now, the beauty of this survey and the focus groups, we take that information and we develop a leadership profile. This is a critical tool, because this is the tool that I will use with regard to recruiting and helping to find candidates that fit our district. And so we have to make sure that that leadership profile truly captures what we would look for in a superintendent in our district. I also want to say that I've worked with districts where there was also a student forum, where students were able to meet and talk about, hear the types of characteristics that we would like to see in our superintendent, because we definitely want to hear that voice. I see that you have a student representative on your board, and her voice is absolutely a great voice, and I love the questions that you had, it's very insightful, and it's also important that we hear from those that we serve. And so the end product with this leadership profile, we're using this to help drive our candidate pool. And so we would look for candidates that match that, that leadership profile. After this, then we would look at the select phase. This is where you take more of a lead, in that I would provide you with a slate of candidates, you will look at the backgrounds of those candidates, of course, I would share them with you in terms of a tier one, tier two, tier three, and then you would determine those candidates that you would like to bring to the table to interview. Once you do that, from that slate, then I go ahead and I set up the interviews for you, we organize everything, it's done in according to how you would like that done, and then we move forward with the interview process. That interview process, you determine how you would like to do that, okay? And if there are multiple interviews, so usually there's a screening interview, and then usually there's another interview, sometimes there's a third interview, depending on how many applicants we have on the slate, and those that you want to move forward. By the time it gets to, um, the end of that selection phase, and you've narrowed it down to your final list, I don't say your top three, I don't even say your top five, why? Because every board is different. You can have as many finalists as you would like. But you have to determine what's the criteria that sets one candidate higher than the other. And so typically, people will have three finalists, but I will say to you, there's no magic number. You can determine how many finalists you choose to have. Once you determine your finalist, um, then we would have that, the final interview process, and we can do this a number of ways. There are some districts that they like to have a meet and greet with their community, where the finalists meet with the community. There are questions that are asked, we can take those questions ahead of time, we sort them out, we let the applicant, the candidates know, here are some of the potential questions that you might see, because some of the questions they might need to prepare for. So we give them a list of questions, it doesn't mean that every question will be asked during that meet and greet, but they have an idea of what to expect, so that they can answer. And then there'll be questions from the floor, we can take questions directly from the floor, and then we can ask those questions. And you would have a moderator for that particular event, um, it can take place, uh, let's just say that you have three finalists. You could set up three different rooms, they could be going simultaneously, and then it's like a round robin. And so in one room, it might be community members, in another, it might be, um, students, in another, it may be adults in terms of faculty and staff. So you can set it up however you would like, and I'd be more than happy to facilitate that. And then we would have that particular, that particular group would then give you feedback on their thoughts. They're not voting for the person, but the questions are objective types of questions that they would answer in a feed, you know, electronically, and then you would get that feedback to say, here are some of the things that stood out about each particular applicant, and then you would be able to make a choice from that. So those are some things that we could do. After that, then we look at the actual selection process, you would decide which person you would deter, you would decide to hire. We go through the negotiations process, and then one of the things that we do is, we have for a couple of months, we have- we have a transition piece that we do. And that helps that particular hire assimilate to the district, understand the board. We facilitate those particular discussions so that everyone is on the same page with a smooth transition. And that's something that we've added to our process. The other piece that I want to emphasize about that is we help you create a dashboard. And this dashboard can include your priorities and how well you are moving toward those goals for those priorities. And it becomes a public document. So, not only do you as a board see that progress, your community can see that progress. Teachers and support staff and students can see that process. There are numerous times where we've worked with districts where, for example, some of the questions about, how do you go about measuring your success? What are those indicators? Well, in a dashboard, you would be able to see what those indicators are and see how the school measures up to those particular indicators. And so, that's something that we can do as well. We do have some optional transition services. If you turn to the back of the document that I gave you, you can see those are not included in the presentation tonight, but it gives you an idea of some of the transition services that we do have as you move forward. Now, that's the core of what we do and who we are, okay? There is quite a bit of background on HYA, and I know that you can absolutely look through that information and see where we are and where we rank. And one of the things that I do that you've heard me say a little bit about is being your ambassador and working as partners. It is a partnership. This is what I commit to you in being a partner with you and finding the best superintendent for our district, for the Hudson City School District. I'm going to wrap up now, and I don't know if you want me to go ahead and take questions, or if anyone has any questions?
I have one.
Why don't you just be also be helpful to talk about your prior experience with the Hudson City School District?
So, two years ago, I was hired to work with the school district in developing the school improvement plans and the district improvement plans. And in doing that, one of the things, we had one school that was a TSI school, and we made the bold decision collectively to, to have each school have a school improvement plan. And the reason that we did that was so that we would have that continuity of instruction. So that when, and I'm going to pick on the example of, of SEL and the use of Ruler. If students are learning Ruler in one environment, and it does not transcend to the other environment, it's a disservice to the students. Because they learn something that may work, and it becomes beneficial to them, and then they go to junior high, or they go to high school, and it's dropped. And so, one of the agreements that was made was that Ruler would be consistent throughout all three schools with regard to social and emotional learning. Because we do know that if students don't have their basic needs taken care of, and if they are not socially and emotionally in a place where they can receive education, they are not in that best space. And there are numerous reasons why students can and cannot be successful. But one of the number one reasons that students can be successful is when you provide a safe learning environment and you address the social and emotional learning needs of each student. And so, we did work with that, and I did offer before, and I'm happy to provide that to you. We did surveys at the end, the process was a very smooth process. We did end up with the, the DESIP, which is the District Comprehensive Improvement Plan. And that set the stage for what would happen at the district level. But one of the things that was really, that I commend the faculty and staff about in developing the DESIP, that was not developed until after each school developed their school improvement plans. So, this was not something that was done top-down. It's not like people sat in a room and said, okay, for the district, here's what we're going to do. Now, schools live long and prosper and go forward. That's not how it was done. Each school, Cheryl, you were there. Each school developed their school improvement plans. And from that school improvement plan, those school improvement plans, what's the through line? What's the common thread? And from there, that's when the broader district improvement plan was developed. So, now you have a full complement of continuity of instruction from elementary to junior high to high school. Which then in turn means that your social and emotional learning becomes consistent. Your, your addressing chronic absenteeism becomes consistent because some of the same strategies would be used, elementary, junior high, and high school. And then, at the core of it all, looking at the delivery of quality instruction. How do we engage students at a level where they, where we hit this 85%? And we increase that 85% so that the majority of our students at the tier one level are successful just by coming to school and being engaged in the classroom? So, that's just a little bit about my background and the work that I've done here.
Awesome. Labona?
Can you explain the graph? It's like, is those numbers represent?
Which one?
Like 93, 90, 88, are those numbers the amount of?
Which ones?
Oh, slide six.
Oh, this slide?
What the graph represents on the slide you were just on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Like 93, 90, 88, are those like the amount of superintendents or people, like executive positions you've hired?
So, those are percentages.
Oh, okay.
Those are percentages. And it's, it's comparing HYA with other companies in terms of the percentages of that 94% that stay the full, for the first full contract.
All right, thank you. I have another question.
Sure.
Is location a factor when you're searching for a superintendent? Is like, is it like a specific thing a board can ask? Because I feel like if you're getting someone from Florida, they're coming all the way up here. They may have different viewpoints, but is there like, is that something you factor in?
Again, that is a board decision. We will cast our net as wide or as narrow as you would like. It can be statewide, it can be region-wide, it can be nationally. However, the board makes the decision, then that's what we would do. You'd be surprised how many people want to move. I came from Las Vegas to Albany, New York.
Thank you.
Probably regretting that about this time of year, huh?
You know, my husband always says this time of year, we could be on a beach somewhere.
Not in Las Vegas.
Well, California's close.
One of the situations we have around here, probably within a 40 to 50 mile radius, there's multiple schools looking for a superintendent. How will that affect us? Because you may have applicants using your firm or another firm. Is there a possibility you may get into like a bidding war? What, what downfalls can we have to that or side effects?
So, I'm going to start with the positive. The positive is that because there may be a number of opening positions, that means that there are going to be quite a few people to select from and candidates to, to look at. What we then would do is we would look at who's the best fit. And it's not, so our process is not one that is just, we put out the job description, we post it, and we sit back and cross our fingers and hope someone will apply. We actively go out to people. And we actively look at people who are in our qualified selection pool, and we tap them and say, not making any guarantees, but you know, this might be a district that you might be interested in. The other thing that you have to decide is, do you want, and you don't, you're not making that decision now, I'm just putting it out there. Do you want an open search, or do you want a closed search? Because that's going to make a difference to some applicants if it's open or closed.
What's the difference?
So, an open search means that probably from the very beginning, if I'm a current sitting superintendent or an assistant superintendent, I'm going to apply for your position, and it's open. People know that I'm applying. A closed search means that it is done in a confidential manner, and names are not released until you get to the finalist stage.
And can you expla, explain the reasons districts might choose one or the other?
So, I will go back to Las Vegas. Clark County School District has an open search by policy. So, they cannot do a closed search. So, from the very beginning, it is an open search from beginning all the way through. Does it limit people who may choose to apply there? Yes, it does. But you're also talking about the fifth largest school district in the country. And so, with that, there is almost an expectation that it is an open search because, number one, it's the law. But also, you're talking about competing with Broward County, Chicago, Dallas, Texas, you're, New York City. You're talking about competing with those much larger districts. In a closed search, the benefits of doing a closed search is that if a current superintendent or current assistant superintendent may be looking to move, but not really unhappy with where they are, and they don't want to send alarm to their community or to their board, then they can apply for jobs confidentially. Typically, there's a greater, there's a greater candidate pool when it's a closed search. But they all know that by the time, if you make it to the finalist, it is going to be public. Because especially if you are a district that selects to have a meet and greet with your finalist, that's going to be public.
Thanks.
But at least they know that they are in the running for a finalist position. And most people are okay at that point with, you know, letting the board know, letting their community know that they are a finalist in a particular district.
Labona, one thing I would say, just like for me personally, when we first met with Dr. Adams, that was really exciting for me is, to your question about local, is I think that it's, it was really appealing to me to have someone who knew our district and who was like local to this area and familiar with the, like what is unique about where we are situated within New York State and sort of like all of the complexities that come with what that means. And so, like although HYA is a nationwide firm, I think what was appealing was that the, the specific person who we were working with isn't someone who's, lives in Boston and is just like zooming in to tell us about this, is someone who like deeply knows the community, the complexities of what it means to be like sandwiched just south of the capital region and just north of like other districts that pay more than we are able to, and all of that. And so, that's just something that's exciting, I think, around that.
And then, to be able to speak to the intimacy of being in a small community. And I will only share my experience. I'm originally from Louisiana. My husband's from New Orleans, and I'm from Shreveport, Louisiana. So, we're both from pretty big cities. We moved to Las Vegas, and Las Vegas was growing at like 5,000 people per month when we moved there back in the, in the early 90s. And to go from a huge district of three, if you can even imagine this, 327,000 students alone, that's just students, 327,000, to come to a community where there was 10,000 students and, and to see how intimate the relationship can be with your community to get to know your people. There's something to be said when you can walk through the grocery store. My husband doesn't want to go to the grocery store anymore because we get stopped, and it's 45 minutes that you're talking to a family or you're talking to students, or, you know, and they see you, and they're like, oh, hi, Ms. Adams, you're my superintendent. Those kinds of things you get in a larger district to an extent, but it's like this. You, in a larger district, you may not be able to get to know your families the way that you can in a smaller district and in a community, in a community like Hudson City. And so, believe it or not, there are people who may want to come from a larger district and come to a smaller district because it really does fit who they are. But again, that's where the leadership profile comes into play, and that's where we do that research to see if that's a good fit. Because if, you know, they could come from a large city and not understand the close-knit community, and that's not going to be a good fit. It's just not. And so, they have to be able to understand that and work with that.
Any other questions? Awesome. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Adams. We appreciate you coming to visit and look forward to working with you.
Thank you so very much. And I'm going to tell you, I am still getting used to that, but it's, Dr. Bailey, you can, you can identify that when it first happened, you had to get used to it. But I'm getting comfortable with it. So, thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and again, I appreciate just the consideration. And I want to say thank you again for this evening. And if there are any questions that come up, you're welcome to email me those questions, and I'll be happy to get a response.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, brings us to our board reports. Audit Committee?
We had an audit committee meeting on November 13th in which Scott Prosser, the district's external auditor, presented the committee with results of the 24-25 audit and recommendations for improvements, which are going to be reviewed and, and, you know, monitored by the committee. And we're tentatively planning to have him present, excuse me, come present the audit to the board on December 16th, is our next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Facilities Committee?
We were not able to have our meeting that was scheduled today due to some staff vacations. We do have another meeting coming up, December 16th.
Awesome. Thank you. Policy Committee?
Policy Committee met last week. We tackled the beginnings of two big topics. One is developing a policy around booster clubs for our district and sort of how we utilize that. That would currently be the, the actual like booster committee as well as PTOs and how we're utilizing them in collaboration with the district. So, we have a draft of that, which will be ready for the next board meeting, but had a much longer discussion kind of about how we want that to, to function. And then, we spent a long time also talking about the process for working on the code of conduct this year. And thinking about how we have a subcommittee of the policy committee that involves more members of the community, more administrators, more teaching staff, to really take a look at that with the goals of, I think, both aligning with, I feel like the junior high presentation feeds right into this really nicely, around how do we like codify all of the restorative work that is happening within the district into our code of conduct? And then, also, how do we take a look at data to really analyze what is or what isn't working currently within the code of conduct? So that our code of conduct is, is really supporting students and teachers in achievement, you know, of all of our goals. So, those are our policy committee updates.
Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
The finance committee will be holding its inaugural meeting on December 1st.
Very exciting. And Board Presidents' Report. So, most of you are aware, we had our special meeting and referendum vote last Thursday, November 13th. Thank you to everyone who voted. Very happy to move the process forward with the Penrose Group and hopefully take the next step towards a new life for JLE. We just heard from Dr. Adams. So, last week, we did meet with three different search consultants, and the board selected Dr. Adams. Many in the community are probably aware, we have worked with HYA in the past. Dr. Adams was not a part of that search. They have, as she said, over 1,000 associates, and that was a separate team that we worked with in the past. We, as Amanda mentioned, we did feel that her familiarity with capital area talent pool and also her familiarity with our district made her a really strong fit. It was great to see her, you know, chatting with Mr. Bear and Ms. Patch at the beginning. So, we feel like those relationships will give her sort of a leg up, and she's got, you know, intimate knowledge of, of, you know, what was needed for somebody to be successful here. Next step is to finalize the agreement with HYA and then, conduct a special board workshop to plan out all the details of the process and the timeline. Definitely top of mind for the board to have community engagement be a significant part of the process. So, we'll be sure to keep everybody updated. So we'll be sure to keep everybody updated as how that will come to fruition. And then separately, Dr. Bailey and Mike Zabella attended the NISBA conference in New York City and had a great time, I'm sure.
Yeah, it was actually very, very interesting. Wasn't quite sure how to handle the whole thing when I first got there, but towards the end of the process, it was very good. Attended, I think, was five or six different meetings over the course of the show. Picked up a lot of good things, met a lot of very interesting people, talked to a lot of other districts and some superintendents and it was very interesting. Hopefully you might be able to implement some of the things that I learned and talked to other people about. And we'll get with that and go from there. One of the things I did hear at one of my conferences was one of the superintendents from a local district said how he, or on their website, they actually have a, ask the superintendent a question right on our homepage. That was your friend from?
Canjo.
Canjo here, yes. Which is very interesting because he said he usually guarantees that there will be a response within 48 hours. So I know it puts a lot more pressure on the superintendent, but that is, I think, opening communications with the community and the school a little bit. Whether it's with you or another superintendent, our next superintendent.
I think that, that, that will sort of segue nicely into our conversation about our board goals later, but it's an interesting idea.
And one other quick thing, another thing I learned was, some of the schools in the state are having a sports program for the students with disabilities, but they're doing it with a mentor. So it's like one-on-one, one student with a student with disabilities and they're having, whether it be basketball or soccer or something like that. And some are having inner-school competitions or some are actually going to other schools to try to encourage the sportsmanship through all levels of students.
That's very cool. I know we have an adaptive PE class.
Yeah, they're taken to the next level.
Yeah, that is cool.
It's very interesting.
There's also an adaptive sports association in Columbia County.
Okay.
Let's see if we can do something with them.
I know, obviously, there's expense to it, but it's, I think it might be something well worthwhile, but there's, there's a lot of other stuff too, so. I definitely appreciated being able to go down.
Awesome. Thank you for joining.
I think the best thing about the conference is exactly as Mike highlighted, you're talking to board members from other school districts and superintendents. And NISBA has a requirement that when you're preparing a presentation, it is the voice of those people. So it's frequently, you're seeing the superintendent and a board member and a community member or business administrator or somebody. So they're telling their story and it has a little bit more relevancy than just like going to see someone who's presenting on a topic. Real-world stuff.
Yeah, it wasn't just the courses or the seminars we were attending, it was the afterwards where you learn a lot of information too.
Yeah. Absolutely. Cool.
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
So is there any other specific reasons than like what you mentioned, why you chose HYA again?
Again, I think it was mostly the, well, A, there's not a lot of search firms out there. Location had a lot to do with it. There were a lot of search firms, there are a lot that are in Long Island or Buffalo. We felt like those were not really that relevant. There were others that were from, you know, the Finger Lakes, one that was from Connecticut. So again, it was really that, you know, she was the closest in proximity to us, she knows our district, she knows like the people that are, you know, most likely, you know, the most likely candidates to apply and that really, you know, made the most sense to us.
Thank you.
She was a recent superintendent in Albany City School District too, so like is really, like knows this work deeply in terms of what we're looking for in a superintendent candidate.
We definitely talked it out.
Okay, that brings us to executive session. We do have a need for an early executive session. I make a motion to enter executive session at 7:29 for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Take it.
All in favor? We will be as quick as we can. Thank you for your patience.
To exit executive session at seven forty six P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Everybody.
Brings us to personnel agenda. Any comments, questions? Okay, make the motion to approve personnel agenda items A one through six and B one through twelve.
Second.
All in favor? That brings us to public forum. Leslie, did anybody say it?
Laura Bender.
Laura Bender. Laura, as you know, each speaker gets three minutes. We're unable to entertain any comments about staff or students.
Good evening, everybody again. I forgive me because I have comments and maybe a question about a couple of things and I tried to organize it. So I'm going to try my best to keep it in order. First, a couple of thanks, thank yous. Thank you for explaining the differentiation of this superintendent search with H Y A and the one that was done in the past. I, I think that a lot of people looked at the board agenda tonight and got a little bit worried. So having that as a differentiating factor, I think, has settled a lot of qualms and worries that people had. So thank you for explaining that. Thank you to Mr. Zabella to, for pointing out that we are one of six school districts around us right now that are searching for a superintendent. So I think we are in a situation where, you know, we don't want to rush, but urgency is, is kind of going to be involved in this, I think. And I don't know if you have established a timeline yet, but I guess maybe if I can point that out as a question, do we have an idea of a timeline?
We're, we're trying to have somebody in place by July first.
Okay.
It's ambitious, but.
Yes.
That's the goal.
And while, while I'm still on the topic of that, I really liked Dr. Adams' presentation with regard to the different levels of stakeholder involvement. And I know the last time that H Y A did the search, the stakeholder groups began in the beginning with the characteristics we were looking for as far as the superintendent. I would, if just I can put my input in, in on that, if we could encourage the use of those stakeholder groups beyond that initial input, I think it would be a really good idea. Your staff have been here for a really long time and know the culture of our buildings and know the culture of the community and we're very much invested in Hudson. And if we could be part of that process beyond just the initial getting of the characteristics, it would be much appreciated on our end. And on an unrelated comment, in regards to the development of the code of conduct, I very much appreciate that we're taking a look at it again. And just a, a reference for the code of conduct that was developed in two thousand and twenty. At the end of two thousand and nineteen, the board had asked the student council of the high school to look over a proposed code of conduct. And then in two thousand and twenty, everybody knows what happened and everything went crazy and we all went home for COVID and then it just kind of never happened. So just a suggestion to put it out into the universe. I don't know where it will go, but if you have the prerogative of involving the students, it would be very much welcome, I think, on their end.
For sure.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else, Leslie?
Oh, no, that's it.
Brings us to the superintendent's report.
So Ivana met yesterday to talk about the agenda. And, and she admirably talked about all the activities that are happening at school. And right in alignment with what Ms. Patch and Mr. Baird just presented on, there's one glaring, missing piece of information that every student should know. What are we working on and how are we doing? Because we're all agreed that the staff need to know, the teachers and the sports staff and the administrators need to know, the families need to know, and the beneficiaries of what we're trying to do, they absolutely need to know. And one of the things that we discussed is that, you know, even if you're a high performing student, your student who's in A P classes or pre-college or going over to D V R T, if the school is better, it is better for everybody. And you heard them say that over and over again in their presentation. We need to be screaming at every opportunity. All right, screaming is not the right word. We need to be sharing at every opportunity what we intend to do, how it's going to be measured and what the data says. It should be on every T V in every one of our buildings. We're blessed with lots of inside the building communications. It should be on our website. It should be on a Facebook page. It should be in communications that go home to families. The progress that we're making or not making needs to be publicly exhibited. We need to rally around successes. We need to embrace around things that are broken. Until we are able to do that, we will not move the needle. We will not close the gap. We will not do the things that we intend to do. So the next time when she presents, she will have exposure. She'll know what it is we're trying to do. I mean, she's blessed, she's at the board meetings. I mean, so she can hear the principals discussing it. But this is not where people should be getting all their information. So we're going to change our tune and we're going to. What was that word, Matt? Not transparent?
Clarity.
We are going to present with clarity what it is we're trying to do. And in that light, I mean, you're, you're seeking the next person who's going to help support and be amazing in the leadership for this district. They, like I said, when I looked at the website when I came here, I had difficulty identifying exactly what is the thing. We want that next person to identify it. And there's lots of people who would come in and embrace what, what it is I'm just talking about because they can see. It is so nice to come into a district where there's work to do and you can see it. And I'm going to be honest and I'll tell you, it is a lot easier to do this than it is to move a Bethlehem, a Gilderland, a North Colony from eighty-five to eighty-six. We have a lot better chance of doing that. And there's a lot of leaders who would love to do this work. So that's what we're going to do, large scale. The Hudson City Police Department has a proposal and, and I, when I was in Albany County, the Albany County Sheriff also proposed this to, to the board. They have an interest in discussing whether or not their rifle can be stored in the buildings. And there's a statewide initiative around this and I'll explain why. And I'll explain that they have a lot of safety guardrails in place. I don't want to tell the whole story because I want them to be able to present. But the weapon is secured and is safe. And the rationale is that it makes sense to have the equipment that they need in the event of a real emergency. So I wanted to ask if the board would be interested in having them come in December or January to present on what they're proposing and what that might look like. You're it out and you'll get a sense of what that might be.
Just, do the officers that are here, are they carrying a weapon or no?
Of course.
They are?
They are, they're carrying their sidearms.
They are carrying their sidearms, okay.
Yes.
There's only one officer. It's just Officer Rao.
Correct.
Yeah.
There's one for both schools?
No.
No, he's the, he's it.
So one for both schools? One person for both.
We used to have a sheriff, deputy over there.
Do they have one at the elementary also or no?
No.
He's shared.
He, he's the only one for the whole district.
Oh, he's the only one for the whole district?
All three buildings, yeah.
Okay.
All three buildings.
Yeah, that was my only concern is what happens when he goes back and forth. Suddenly it's getting moved a lot.
Yep, and then we willing to have them discuss that.
Yeah.
I'd like to talk to you about something else that also is.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to hearing what they have to say, but it makes me really uncomfortable.
Yep, there's, there's things to consider.
I, I don't, I just, when I saw that, I just thought they have, guns have no place in a school. And, and to me, that's bringing that, I don't know. But I'll listen, try to be open.
And I, and quite frankly, I haven't heard their presentation either. It was just a proposal and since I was familiar with that, I thought I would broach it with the board. And they may have some really good fail safes that could make people feel comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you. On the agenda tonight was the creation of a special education teaching position at the secondary level. I may have mentioned before, it is a good habit for boards to acknowledge, this is a large scale investment, obviously. It would be in addition, addition to our expenditures. That wasn't budgeted last year, but there's a clear need. State Education Department sets forth some boundaries around the age gap within a specific classroom. It has to be within thirty-six months, I believe. So they're conscientious about that. Plus also, in order to create really relevant opportunities for our students with varying abilities, those classes should be specifically aimed at students' needs. And after some review, and you know that Ms. James Hughes is relatively new to the district too. She's our Director of Student Services. She's trying to get a more global picture of what we're offering, that we unquestionably have a need that our students aren't being served perfectly that are combined in a relatively large class right now. So that's why that proposal's on the board agenda tonight, to create a new position. After it's created, we would advertise and ideally draw someone into that position. Likewise, it's a good practice, the board, we will bring to you when we are abolishing positions or we're changing titles of positions. You know, the board minutes always act as a record of those things that signify the start of a salary, the end of a salary, the beginning of employment, the end of employment. The same thing is for positions. A district shouldn't have five hundred custodial positions lingering out in perpetuity because it's very difficult to budget. We need to know, we have twenty-six custodians. And if we need an additional one, we create a position, we hire into the position. If we don't need the position, we abolish it. That's how, what good budgeting will look like. And as you, we forward in the process this year, we want to be able to describe, we have two hundred teachers, we have this many of whatever. So this is an important process and that's why you're, you're seeing and hearing that as a proposal tonight as part of the agenda.
Can I, I just have two, two things to. I'm pretty sure that the last special ed director, Kim Leibert, who was here for years, was very much aware that this was happening. This would happen and was planning for that. There was a bubble of kids that were moving up. So I'm not sure where the ball got dropped and why it wasn't budgeted for, for that position to be created for, you know.
Before now.
Before now. But with that said, it is kind of a temporary position because that bubble of students will eventually.
All things are temporary.
Well, that is true.
Yeah, and, and what we never know is we never know what, what population will influence into the district.
Sure, absolutely.
What population will leave, who will return from out of district placement, who will go.
It's always fluctuating and changing and.
You know, as is the nature of things, we know year over year, people retire. That person gains more seniority and, you know, there's, there's a lot of things. And that was the other thing, I'm glad you brought that up, Maureen, just like as a procedural thing. When we do know that there's a terminal date, board appointments should say there is a terminal date. That's only fair to an applicant, right? And we did that like with grant money, like COVID, it's not uncommon to say it's only good for three years. But that's another good point.
Is there a difference between not rehiring for a position versus abolishing a position?
In my mind, that position continues to exist until the board takes action.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you may not rehire, you could leave it vacant. And that should be budgeted, even though it's vacant.
Okay.
Into the incoming year. It's, it's not a very accurate, you know, way of, of budgeting.
Okay.
Yeah, and well, we could talk more about it in the.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering because I know there's some teacher positions that were not filled. I didn't know if they were abolished or just not refilled, so.
Not refilled and they should be in the budget.
Okay.
Can I chime in here and interrupt also?
Sure.
If you don't mind. But this has come up in other meetings, like what, how many cuts are there district wide? At some point, I would like for us to wrap our hands around exactly, not just the teachers, but aides, T As, subs. We're missing a lot of people in, in different places too, clerical.
I think that'll all be part of this year's budget plan, right? We'll be like really strategically looking at it.
Yeah, and, and because of how things have transpired in full clarity. This is going to be our starting point. We really, because of some of the other things I've mentioned about how grant monies have been intermingled with general fund money, it's been very difficult to understand and identify who actually is, how many there actually are. We have to use this year as a baseline, as a non-negotiable. Here we are, we have this many of this. And then whatever comes next, we're adding or subtracting. That's just how it has to be, but there, we have to establish a baseline. And there's another thing that will be very beneficial for the next leader who comes in, they'll know. We will have already gone through all the hard work because the budget will be done by the time the person comes in. But then going into next year, what a blessing it will be to know and to know what our long-term strategies are and where we might see some like roll-off student population, things like that. It'll be a good thing.
And then just procedurally, that would be something that finance committee would start looking at when they start meeting and bring that back to the board and say, this is where we're at in this process and we'll track it in their reports.
It's actually, it's exciting because then you as a board and absolutely as a central office, we feel like we're in control of the situation, not the situation controlling us. It is, it's very empowering and that's a hundred percent how we want it to be. The Communication Advisory Committee, I put out advertisement for the public and for the staff over the last couple of weeks. There's eleven people signed up. There's seven staff members and four parents that are volunteering to do that. I think we only have four meetings scheduled. The idea is, our first meeting, we're going to talk about what are our wow factors? What do we see that is working and is not working? Leading into the development of a survey that we'll send to the community, leading into some really thoughtful and responsive, okay, what's our action plan this month? Six months, a year from now? This is great in the combination with our communications person from Bosse's having her last day with us yesterday. She had taken the job with the state, so the, her supervisor at Bosse's will be the itinerant in the short term and they will hire and assign someone else to us. Good timing. But we, we need to do some accounting around what we're doing well and what we're not doing well. And again, like with everything, if we identify those things that we think are not quite right and we say we're going to do it, doing it would be very important and relevant for the people who are dedicating their time. And, and absolutely the great thing about communication is people can see that you did it. It's not like some of the other things, like we're going to improve the shelving. Well, you only know that if you're in here. But communications, I mean, like the first thing I said, we are not telling our story relevant, connectedly and to the people who actually need to know it, we're spinning our wheels. So if anybody wants to climb on board, I will send another invitation to all of you. And they're in the evening, they're from six-thirty to seven-forty-five, they're virtual, so it's not too heavy a lift. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Um, thank you very much. Uh, brings us to our consent agenda. Um, we've had requests to pull a few items. Uh, we're gonna pull C, pull D, and pull J. So I make a motion to approve consent.
Mark, can you repeat that? Pull C?
Pull C, D, and J. So make a motion to approve consent agenda items A, B, E through I, and K through U.
A, B?
A, B, yep, E through I, and then K through U. Second. All in favor? All right, and, uh, that brings us consent agenda item C. Uh, this is the, um, uh, memorandum agreement with BRI consultancy. This is a, uh, agreement for them to audit our Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers grant project. This is our after-school grant funds, um, it's required by New York State law. It's about ten thousand dollars. Previously, um, some of these have cost us up to eighty thousand dollars. In addition to this, we also pay, have an MOU with our clerical staff, um, uh, where a member of the clerical staff has a stipend for doing data entry.
So what do they actually do?
Um, they have to audit the expenditures, it's millions of dollars. Um, so they're auditing the expenses for New York State, making sure it's all spent correctly.
They're different than the other auditors that we use?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Because this is specifically auditing this one grant, right? And, and just to check my understanding right, the Twenty-First Century Grant is what provides free after-school to every kid in the district, which is a.
And the other ones don't do this one? Why is this separate from the other ones?
So I, I believe this one is, um.
Our auditors don't audit grant funds.
Well, there's, well, there's an element they audit grant funds, but there, I believe this one is auditing, uh, performance metrics too.
Good.
So it's, it, again, it's a requirement from the state to audit the program that it is accomplishing what it is set out to do.
And this is something we've been using?
Uh, we've been using them since two thousand and three.
Okay.
Um, prior to that, we were using, uh, Candace Leroux and OBC Consulting. And again, the cost of those two firms was over eighty thousand dollars.
Wow.
So this consultancy plus the MOU with the secretaries is only twenty thousand dollars.
I'm just curious, how much is this grant?
Uh, millions.
It is, okay.
One point nine?
Just a rough figure, okay. So it's a, it's a very large grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we were, I didn't know what it was either, so.
Okay.
Uh, at the bottom, it says that seven month total will be twenty-eight thousand. Is that different?
Uh, that's, that's, this is, this is C, not, uh.
Oh, 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 nevermind.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, uh, make a motion to accept, uh, consent agenda item C.
Second.
All in favor? Um, and next is consent agenda item D. This is, uh, accounting treasurer services agreement with management advisory group. They are currently acting as our district treasurer for a sum of four thousand dollars monthly, which is a fantastic deal, and they're doing a great job. We're getting all of our reports on time. Any questions, comments?
No, just that this is saving us money, right?
Yes, absolutely.
This year.
Uh, does anyone remember if we appointed her as treasurer with an end date? I don't remember.
It was, um, November thirtieth.
Oh, right, so we're gonna need to update that as well. So if, if the board approves this contract, they will need to also, in personnel, appoint her as the, or, actually, what are we doing in personnel? Are we doing, uh, consent?
We did it in personnel.
We're.
In contract.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it's a district officer appointment.
Right.
It's an officer appointment, so I think we have to do that, but I think we have to do that tonight then.
Correct, that, that, I just remembered that.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So we gotta add that.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, let's do this one first. Um, any further questions, comments? Make a motion to accept, uh, consent agenda item D.
Second.
All in favor?
One, two, three. So I have five?
Mm-hmm. Um, and then, uh, Diane and Mike, you guys are opposed or abstaining?
Oh, opposed.
Opposed.
I wasn't asked, so.
Um. And then brings us to consensus agenda item J. Uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, Kusakui Transport Contract Extensions. Uh, I believe Mr. Makar would like to.
Accusing myself due to conflict of interest.
Great, so, uh, make a motion to accept, uh, consensus agenda item J.
Second.
All in favor?
So can I just ask, um, for item C, did everybody approve?
Yes, I believe so.
The BR?
Yeah, so you guys.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Um, and so we need to add consent agenda item W. Gee, no, V.
V.
V. Um.
A resolution to appoint, uh, Amy Skiff as the treasurer through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, so, uh, consent agenda item V, make a motion to appoint Amy Skiff as district treasurer through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
You already have a V on here.
No, to you.
We, we took out you.
Oh, you must, you're looking at the printed version.
Yes, and then got, uh, taken off since it was printed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So is that five, yes, two?
Oppose, oppose.
Uh, so Diane has opposed, Mike?
Opposed.
Okay. Um, all right. That brings us to old business. Uh, last board meeting, we discussed twenty-five, twenty-six Board of Education goals. Uh, got some great input and ideas. Um, this is a draft. Um, I would love to get any, uh, oh yeah, I can get a clicker. Um, love to get any further feedback, um, from the group. Uh, if everybody's good with it, we could adopt them today, um, but, you know, we should also get them right. Uh, goal one is on leadership and governance. Board of Education will strengthen its effectiveness as unified governance team committed to transparency, accountability, and continuous improvement in servants and stu- in service to students and the community. The objectives and benchmarks are superintendent appointment, complete the superintendent, s- complete the search and appointment of a permanent superintendent by July first, twenty-twenty-six through transparent, inclusive process involving staff and community input. Maintain public communication through the process to promote trust and confidence. Uh, board onboarding and operations, create a board member communication handbook and conduct a professional development workshop to train all board members. Create a board activity calendar, tracking key governance events, budgetary milestones, and academic data presentations. Uh, board self-evaluation, conduct a mid-year review in January twenty-twenty-six and a formal annual self-evaluation using NISBA standards and SUPEREVAL by June first, twenty-twenty-six. Any questions, comments on section one?
No, I think that it's, uh, a good choice for that to be our primary goal.
Yes.
I think that's a good prioritization there.
Yes, that was a great suggestion, Maureen. Um, goal number two, student achievement and well-being. The board will ensure that all decisions prioritize the academic success, personal growth, and social emotional wellness of every student. Objectives and benchmarks, state of driven improvement, review academic and climate survey data quarterly with district administration to identify achievement trends and inform resource allocation. Curriculum review, identify areas of need and maintain responsibilities for, and main responsibilities for a new executive director of teaching and learning. Review current curriculum maps, including career and technical education. Student well, support and wellness, review annual wellness plan to sustain and strengthen district's mental health and wellness programs. Celebrating success, recognize student and staff achievements at each monthly board meeting.
I have two questions about this one, I guess. In the curriculum review, I just wanna be like clear about what is the responsibility of the board versus what are responsibilities of a superintendent within that? To me, this feels a little bit like we're potentially like infringing on superintendent responsibilities.
Um, yeah.
As written, and so that's, I guess I would just like to like, like think about what.
In the curriculum review.
Like I, I don't feel like we're, like broad strokes, we can look at our like K-12 curriculum, but we're not actually looking at like curriculum maps within subject areas as a board. Or I, I don't, or I don't think that that's really like within our purview.
Yeah, I'd certainly love any feedback from Dr. Bailey and other administrators as well.
No?
Yeah.
Sure. Um, you know what, um, I'm glad that, um, you paused there. That's, it's a good focus area. Um, and talking with, in the cabinet, um, we've been thinking about how to abolish and restructure things. We think that that position, the director of teaching and learning, should return back to director of curriculum and instruction. Yeah, I know we're talking about semantics, um, but if you were to take a snapshot, go within a twenty-five mile radius and snapshot of who is sitting in the seat to help to do what you're just talking about, it's usually called assistant superintendent or director of curriculum and instruction. Under that falls assessment, under that falls grants, under that falls evaluation, a whole bunch of things. But if we're, it's really about curriculum and instruction, it's the bare root of things. So that's one thing, and I'm gonna talk with the board more about that in December. I think it's fine for the board to say, ensure that the district reviews the relevancy or alignment of their curricular, name a thing, their curriculum maps, the curriculum in the classroom, the curriculum. I think, um, giving you an advisory, you can say, are you doing what you need to do? We wanna see a report on, that's absolutely within the purview of the board. It's not really the board making the decision, this is great and this isn't. But instead saying, we, you, the superintendent, and the director of name a thing, tell us how you are doing what is supposed to be being done. So.
I guess I see that sort of embedded in number one, then around data dev and improvement. Like where we lean in as a board then is, is the student academic data. Like our responsibility is, is the student academic data meeting the needs of students? Are we showing that students are successful?
Mm-hmm.
It's the responsibility then of the superintendent and the central office staff to make sure that the, like roles and responsibilities of other staff members and that the curriculum maps and whatnot underneath it are leading to those results. Like I think our lens as superinten- as superintendent, no, 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 um, as board is to like look at the outcomes.
Mm-hmm.
And your job is the roadmap to the outcomes.
Yeah, and I feel like, uh, we're a very lucky board in that we are graced with three people with exceptional experience in the classroom, um, and directly in the school. But I think having, uh, many of us directly reviewing curriculum is, is perhaps not serving, you know, serving that, that, those outcomes as well as it could be. Uh, we just, some of us, you know, it, it doesn't hurt to, again, seek data about how successful those are, but the expertise, um, you know, not each of us has the expertise to make specific curriculum comment, commentary.
Mm-hmm. I think it really comes down to the assessment, evaluation, or monitoring. In other words, um, uh, uh, examines the effectiveness of certain curriculum, or seeks to understand, or it's just someone needs to report out to you whether it is or it isn't. That's really the board position.
I, I, I think what maybe motivated this, uh, objective at this moment in time was just knowing that the structure of the cabinet is changing and, and maybe that the board wants to make sure it's changing in the right way. Is that the, um, so maybe it stays as that?
So then it's not really curriculum review then, right? I think it's something like, maybe it's something about like.
Academic performance.
Align, alignment of personnel, and it's sort of a broader thing about just like ensuring that, that the position appointments that we are making are in service of student data. Cause again, like that's where our, our like lean is, is to be thinking about what are the positions that are being recommended? What are we budgeting for?
Yeah, yeah, making sure that the people that we're appointing are in direct service of student achievement.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if this is the right time to ask, but what's the difference between the, the name of that position? Assistant Superintendent versus, um, Director of Stu- is it just a name? Or is there different titles or different job?
Same certification, essentially the same title. I was just try- trying to say, like, there's a, I mean, be quite frank, there's a, a little bit of a concern that we'll be attracting, uh, a building, actually be a district level administrator. So they have their master's degree and they have certifications as a building leader and a district leader, which is basically another master's degree.
Okay.
Into a job that isn't called assistant superintendent. The one bridge closer to that is call it curriculum instruction, which is almost the same thing. But that's the words, those are the words that people are using if you went to another district.
Okay.
What, what's your job? I am the, of curriculum instruction. People, people in the field identify with it, they know what that means.
So you're, you're saying that it will help us attract?
I believe.
People who are on that career track?
We think so. Teaching and learning, you could be just doing grants. You could just be doing teacher evaluation. You could be doing monitoring progress in kindergarten. There's no, like, it doesn't, it could be, um, a little less worldly than those two words, curriculum and instruction, that is, are used so prevalently in most places.
Like, it's not being in this position before, it's like, why don't we have a superintendent? And that's why I was always wondering. So it's the same job description, different title?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a great question, Mike. And I, we bannered around like grants and, you know, look, uh, look at some of the other titles we've had and just like slap another name in there, slap another name.
Yes, well, it seemed like.
A few years ago, we did have an assistant superintendent.
I always remember super.
Yes, yes.
That's why.
That was.
Um, and that is one of the issues I think we have, we've just been adding titles and putting somebody in it, and I think.
We didn't add a position, though, it was a title change. It wasn't a, it's not like we duplicated that position.
Okay, and do title changes usually increase pay?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
No. I mean.
Well, technically, we did add a position, though, we had, um.
And the board needs to abolish that one too, student engagement.
We did, yeah, we did actually add a position.
But this wasn't a new position.
Well, yeah, and that was a position that was created three or four years ago, wasn't it?
But we did.
It started out as DEI.
Yes, so it really, it, it started out as DEI, so, and then DEI was got, was abolished.
It's, I think it's, that conversation is not really.
It's different, yeah.
That's current board goals.
Yeah, I didn't mean to get anybody else.
Maybe we could just go to the next goal and table this one?
There are two.
So do we need to change bolt point two? Do we change the sub-bolt points?
Yeah, well, we'll revisit both of them, but I think there's also similar, um, now that we're looking at this similarly, like what's, now I'm looking at this, do we have an annual wellness plan?
Yeah, that was gonna be my next question, I don't know what that one means.
Yeah, we do, okay.
Cheryl's been fiercely championing that committee.
There's a wellness policy that we're working on, there's a wellness committee, but there's not a written wellness plan. But we can definitely create one.
Okay, cool. Um. Um, and then, you know, I think celebrating success, that, that's also something that's maybe a little bit out of our control. We've seen different attempts at it in the past. And, you know, I think some people feel differently about, you know, formal acts of recognition. Just, you know, if we're putting it down here, what do we feel like the best way to actually do that is? And is it something that's really in our control or is it something that is more?
I have a suggestion, and I think we've batted this around just as a joke or something, I'm not really sure. But as we have our meetings and there's executive session, we can have some kids come in and talk about things or put an art display or have a show of something at the board meeting so that you have a display, but you're not saying, congratulations on getting, you know, some high score on a test. You showcase the student by a sample of their work in some way.
Yeah, I mean, we've had students perform here, but how do you do that for staff?
You don't want to see the teachers dance? I don't know.
I think one of the things that we've faced when we do it monthly is that it can feel a little forced and a little, um, kind of, oh, it's a run-through, it's an obligatory, somebody was gonna get it. I think there may be a value in actually reducing the frequency of that recognition so that it becomes a little bit more, um, a little bit more of a highlight. Whether that's four times a year, um, you know, that which could coordinate with our quarters pretty well. Um, I think, I think coming up with those on a, on a monthly basis has drawbacks.
Could just be something subtle that we do too. Just a subtle acknowledgement somehow and not at a, at a board meeting.
I think where I'm stuck is like, what's the criteria through which we are recognizing students and staff? And that in and of itself takes like a development of something, like what, what is the, and I worry that that opens a little bit of a can of worms when there are like a lot of other big things that we really truly have to get done this year. Like I am all for recognizing and celebrating staff and student achievements. I think in my mind, that's actually like our role as board is best served in goal three there around like, how do we recognize it? We show up to things and we like clap loudly for the kids when we're in the audience. We show up to parent teacher confer- like we sh- we show up to whatever, like superintendent conference days and like help serve lunch to the staff. Like I think that's how we support staff as the board.
May I make a suggestion that might not be a good one? Mr. Bear and Ms. Patch came tonight to present on the goals of the junior high school. Next year, they will have gone through a year of this process. They will have a collection of students who have succeeded in some way, perhaps next year. And, and they, and allow them to help choose the criteria, but, and you're always wondering how to get parents and families uh, closer to the board meetings. Is, is why not have a recognition of one of the benchmarks that they just talked about? Recognize the kids on the meeting, the night of the meeting, when you're, the junior high is presenting. And that's, you get the marriage of celebrating last year's. You don't have to do this, I'm just saying, the celebrating last year's and the families on the board hear what the goals are for that year. You have all the people and all the things in the same place at the same time. The board is involved, the families are involved, and you're all hearing the same story, just an idea. And it doesn't have to be five hundred kids, nobody wants that. You want to like choose a select thing, like, um, you know, kids who scored a four on a state assessment or kids who had perfect attendance all year, or choose a thing. That's exemplification of what we're, said we're gonna do. Then you got full circle. But you don't, you know, we have a lot of time to decide that, but just, just putting that in your mind.
Yep. Appreciate that.
Yeah, I kinda like the idea of, of, um, I still actually kinda like the quarterly idea, um, but maybe tying it, I like the idea of tying it to the benchmarks. Um, and we could, unfortunately, there's three schools in four quarters, I'd say we could run right through the schools where those schools gets.
Do you know, do quarters in the elementary?
Oh, I do that trimester, just to make it extra confusing.
Yeah, let's, let's run another monkey wrench over there.
But I, I always liked the idea of perfect attendance for a quarter, um, just, um, for a variety of reasons.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I think that that would enable us to do that. So yes, I understand tabling that for now, but that would be my last smidge of input.
Um, goal three, community engagement and partnerships intent. The board will foster meaningful relationships with family, staff, and community partners through proactive communication, visibility, and collaboration. Uh, objective one, participation and visibility. Each board member will attend at least once, attend at least one school or community event per month during the school year. Uh, maintain a board engagement log to track attendance and community interactions. Two, communication and input, investigate ways to receive public comment and suggestions via digital communication. Sort of similar to what Mike was, um, suggesting earlier. Um, track in-person and virtual attendance at meetings and report trends annually. Um, community partnerships, invite three new local businesses, nonprofits, or higher education institutes to present at a board meeting. Hold at least one board meeting, uh, not on district property to increase community engagement. Any, uh, thoughts, questions?
I have something to add on that. Um, so Teresa Hayes was at our policy meeting, uh, presenting about, uh, the Booster Club. So I threw us kinda all under the bus and I reached out to her and said, let us know when you have something going on. So we can show up. So just so you know, there should be an email coming.
That's great, yeah.
And their events are usually fun too, that's a great application.
This one sounds good to me.
Cool. Um, anybody else? All right, goal four, policy planning and accountability. Uh, Amanda helped craft this one. Um, the board will ensure that all policies and planning processes align with the district's mission, promote operational excellence, and support positive student outcomes. Objectives and benchmarks, comprehensive policy review. Partner with NISBA to complete a full update of the district's policy manual as a part of a three-year policy review cycle. Um, community input and policy development, expand opportunities for stakeholder participation by broadening membership of policy committee to include representatives from staff, famo- families in the community. Um, stability and systems alignment, prioritize policy updates that build clear, consistent systems supporting district operations and governance. Any questions, comments? Okay, so it's really just goal two that we need to, um, clean up a little bit. Um, take some of the input, uh, and feedback and circulate a new draft that we can, uh, present at the next meeting. Um, there's no new business, uh, policy section. We have third readings.
This is all the one big bundle of student district records work. Um, everything is the same as what you all saw in the second read except for eleven twenty R, which reflects the changes that Maureen suggested at the last meeting, um, which just helped like streamline and clarify the language so that it's a more understandable flow, I think, is how I would summarize that.
Yeah.
Um, so you can see in eleven twenty R, those, the new changes are in red that are there.
Thank you. Any further questions or concerns? We feel comfortable moving to adopt them? Okay, uh, make a motion, uh, to adopt policy eleven twenty, eleven twenty R, eleven twenty E one, eleven twenty E two, eleven twenty E three, uh.
Got them all.
That's it, yeah, okay. Um, yeah, that's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Um, one quick update too, there were some policies that were on first read last agenda, um, that got pulled from second read this agenda, and that is just because the attorney sent a lot of just like little semantics updates, but we didn't have time to get through all of them for this meeting, so those will go on the next one. Those are all close to being ready also.
Um, Leslie, did anybody sign up for public forum?
No.
Um, brings us to board discussion. Anybody else got anything else they'd like to add?
I have a random question or comment or just a general inquiry.
Yes.
Um, once upon a time ago, we had a parent ask a question about seeing something in the bathrooms. Uh, I just want to make sure that that was, uh, addressed. Uh, also, the bathrooms in the schools have, um, been locked in the past and there's been a lot of graffiti and everybody knows what happened during COVID. You're supposed to wash your hands, use the soap, and so bathrooms don't have soap in them. So I just want to bring that out as a general, can we do a review of what's going on in the bathrooms?
Bathrooms in all, what is that just kinda spotty and happening through, you know, inadequate replacement? Where are we seeing, I think that would be the question, is where are we seeing?
What building?
What building?
Uh, well, high school with the lack of soap and all of that. Middle school, junior high, sorry, locked, graffiti.
Yeah, that, those parts I know, or it's more the so- the soap, that's a maintenance issue that.
That's here.
Okay.
That sounds like that goes to facilities committee, I think, is why you're asking.
Oh, that's why, yeah, thank you.
Um, yeah, and I do believe the gentleman who, um.
Mr. Santiago?
Yeah, spoke at the board meeting, was directed to Tyler Kreitzman, who is the, both the district safety officer and the chair of the district safety committee.
So we're doing something about making sure that.
I called and spoke to him and, um, he was, you know, I invited him to the, um, the last safety meeting that we had, but it was at a time where it was not convenient for him to get there. Um, but we talked about, um, what after-school coverage looks like and the area where, um, the incident occurred. Uh, so in the safety meeting, we talked about what does chaperoning look like, chaperoning coverage? Because it was in, it was in a pub, very public area. It was in that, um, what are they called, the event entrance? Um, that goes between the junior high and senior high, those restrooms there, which here, I think it was, um, I don't think it was volleyball, but we have chaperones at these events that are in and around the area. So we talked about chaperone coverage, what type of training do they get and where they are during, um, those types of events. I won't pretend that it's perfect, it's not perfect in most places, but the idea was we know that we don't always want them just in the door, we don't always want them just in the hall, but kind of a marriage of those things. And I think the most daunting thing for him was the, um, the fact that he was an adult instructing a student to do something, and he's someone who has worked in, in a position where he should be able to direct people and the student did not respond. I mean, that's the compounding thing beyond what the behavior was that the kid was distributing or exhibiting. Um, so we did talk about it from a perspective of chaperones. And, um, and making sure that the building is locked and all those areas where students aren't supposed to be during events, which is very hard in this facility.
Ju- just to be clear, the bathrooms in the junior high are locked during the day?
I know, yeah. I was, Mr. Santiago was talking about a sporting event, but I know, and the high school is as well. Um, and there, there's someone there to unlock them when students come to, to use them. I'll check on the junior high, cause I was there, um, today, I don't know if that, that was the case, but um, would you like to talk about this in facilities? You want to talk about it?
Yeah, we can go. Thanks.
And, uh, we are not the only school district that has this issue either.
I, I know.
It's, it's, it's crazy.
I'm excited that our bathrooms are part of the referendum, they're part of the construction project. They, they need a lot. I think they should.
They need a lot, but they get trashed, so that's.
I, I have broken the window, you know, that scenario that if things look bad, then they'll, they treat them badly. I think if things look good, they'll treat them better. That's my optimistic perspective.
Any other? Well, thank you, just so everybody knows, this is, that's what this section is for, um.
Oh, yeah, I actually just wanted to say real quick, uh, very pleased with the, um, turnout for the referendum for the General Edwards School.
Yes.
Um, it seemed like a lot of community engagement and positive support for moving forward with that.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, agree.
Very excited for that.
When should we hear from them again? Is there a timeframe?
I believe their next milestone, there's, they should be hearing from the state about funding in early spring, is what they said.
Oh, not till spring, okay.
Yeah, um, and if they get their funding in the spring, then we would be moving to close. Um, if they don't get their funding, then we wait another year and, um, uh, they would apply for the next round, so.
Wow.
Uh, I believe we have three more years, so they.
And we're locked to them.
Yeah, yeah, they have the ability to apply for multiple rounds. Yeah, it's a, it's a funky game.
So we still own it. We still own it for a while.
Anybody new who came in would be seeking the same funding, so.
Yeah.
Start over with the same three-year process with someone different.
And it's, um, we still have it. Uh, the referendum was necessary to be able to sell it, but also, um, with the positive referendum, we, it's a milestone to hold deposit if we, if they back out for any reason, so.
And, and each year that goes by increases the amount of money that we hold onto.
What happens if something happens to the building?
It's insured.
We still insure, we still.
Okay.
Don't say that, Mike.
I, I know.
Too late. Seriously.
Okay, uh, upcoming meetings, finance committee meeting Monday, December first, twenty twenty five at four thirty PM in the district conference room. Policy committee meeting Tuesday, December ninth, twenty twenty five, five to seven PM in the high school library. Facilities committee meeting Tuesday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty five at five PM in the district conference room. Regular board of education meeting Tuesday, December sixteenth at six PM in the high school auditorium. Policy committee meeting Tuesday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty six, five to seven PM in the high school library. Facilities committee meeting Tuesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty six, five PM in the high school conference room. Regular board of education meeting Tuesday, January twentieth, twenty twenty six, six PM in the high school auditorium. So everybody please be on the lookout for an email for December availabilities for a special, um, special
Workshop.
Superintendent's search.
Can we get these dates put on the calendar that's on our website?
Yes, we can. Yes. Um, okay, at this point, uh, we have a need for a second executive session, uh, for the purposes of, um, discussing the employment history of a particular person as a person. I make a motion to enter executive session at eight forty-three PM.
Second.
All in favor? There will be no further business after this executive session. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you everybody for watching.